The 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM, Council Chambers, 111 East Maple Avenue. And so, Mr. City Manager, welcome.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, and we've got the I Love Independence Film Contest first. Do you have anything that you would like to tee that up with?
I will defer to you, sir, on this one.
Okay, well, Brent Schonmeyer is going to come up. He is going to talk about this. He actually has a bit of a video to start with. So Brent, thank you for being here to give us some background on this and how it's working and where we're at and all of that.
So I'm Brent Schonmeyer. I live here in Independence, and I'm the volunteer organizer of a thing called the I Love Independence Film Festival, which took place in 2024. The idea of the film festival was to share the people, the places, and events associated with Independence, and credit for the idea goes to Mayor Rory Rowland. Major financial support was provided by the Missouri Humanities Council, and the Chamber of Commerce was a sponsor. Truman Heartland Community Foundation was the fiscal agent. No city funds were involved. Winners were selected by an independent panel of judges, and I want to share with you a short sizzle reel, which shows some of the video content that the contest stimulated.
Do we hear the audio?
The love of technology. Tell you what, let me go on and tell some other things, and maybe we can come back to the video.
Sounds great.
So you can currently see the winning videos on the festival's website, www.iloveindependence.org, or you can join us at a mini-festival Saturday, February 22nd, at 2:00 PM at the Inglewood Arts Center, where the winning videos will be shown. Winners have received a cash prize, a cash award, and top winners will receive an Indy, which is an award created by the glassblowers at Inglewood Arts. Now, it's not an Oscar nor Lombardi, but, you know, it's something that, you know, has some weight and substantial nature to it.
Is there a ledge you can set that on, so people can just continue to enjoy its presence? There you go. Thank you.
All videos, this is interesting development. All videos will be considered for inclusion on the Humanities TV, HTV, which is an initiative of the Missouri Humanities, which is a free streaming channel that shares films, docu-series, and other digital storytelling projects to connect viewers with stories, people, and places rooted in the humanities. So people produce content, and then they spend a lot of time creating content, but there's not a lot that goes in. Well, now, how do people see this? How does it come into their world? And so some of these stories are known in our community, but what if you live in Hannibal? What if you live in Carthage? What if you live in St. Genevieve? So some of these videos will show up on the Humanities Council, and the Humanities put $10,000 into this, and the reason why, they wanted to kind of invest in an innovative idea, and the idea is that another community could do their own film festival. Think of the stories that could be told about Hannibal. Think about the stories that could be told about Springfield. Think about the stories that could be told about St. Joseph, Missouri. So this project was really sort of possible because we're interested in sharing stories of places, and that in many ways, some of you know, I've, you know, I've been a writer, I've been a journalist, I've written local histories, but I've come to understand is that people aren't readers anymore, and that if you want them to understand the stories of a place, particularly for a new generation, you're going to, we're going to need to create video content. So just a small observation, there are people in town who would go to any church group, go to any function, and talk about the history that they know, do the PowerPoint presentation, but when you give them the idea of creating a video, they kind of balk at that because they don't have familiarity with it. If you talk to younger people, they're creating video content all the time. So the real challenge of this, and I think what the new work of the film festival will be, how is it you create people who have stories to tell with people who know how to tell stories but don't know what to tell? And so the idea that you would pair these people up, perhaps a young video student filmmaker with somebody who has content. So there were really pretty extraordinary stories here. In a world of kind of like fake content, there was a story about somebody who created an exercise device, a serial entrepreneur in Independence that showed up on space labs, you know, orbiting around the country, and I didn't quite believe it, so I went and I checked, and the story's true, and I found the patent. And so there are just stories that we need to be telling about their community. So if I can get the techno help of the staff, maybe we can show the sizzle reel, and while they're helping out with that, I'm happy to answer what few questions I hope that you might have.
Any questions for Brent?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
How many submissions did we end up with?
That's a great question.
Well, I was afraid you were going to ask.
Nope, you go ahead. You talk.
We designed the contest. I've never done a film festival before, so how would you know what to expect? So in going into it, we had discussions about it. We wanted to make it open. We wanted to make it accessible. We use a platform called Film Freeway, which is used by a lot of film festivals. We didn't charge anything to submit an entry, and the world responded. There was a category for students, a category for college, and a category for adults, and we had an international category, and we were overwhelmed by the international response. We received 1,044 entries. We have 239 hours of video. Many of them failed to read the contest rules, and they just submitted it because I've got a three-hour zombie movie if you want to come over and watch it. You know.
But I will provide the popcorn, so if everybody wants to go, we can do it. And thank God for Steve.
Didn't speak too soon. It was working fine an hour and a half ago.
Maybe I can continue here?
Absolutely, great idea.
So strangely enough, I have content from Pakistan. I have contact, we have contact from Chile, we have contact, and just a quick funny sort of story, so you say, well, did I watch all 239 hours? Well, no. I mean, the rule wasn't supposed to be like a five-minute video, so you just said, you just sorted them like, well, the hour video doesn't qualify, and you just say, well, you know, you're disqualified. So I got a note back from somebody from Trento, Italy, and said, well, why was I disqualified? My story is really about independence. It had to do with a story about refugees. And I said, well, that's a form of independence, but this contest is really about this place in the United States called Independence, Missouri. And so they said, you know, there. So in an odd sort of way, and I don't know quite what to do with this, we probably have the most extraordinary, unusual content of videos that are being produced anywhere in the world, because we just said, share what you have, and you could have free, and videomakers are producing extraordinary sort of content. It just doesn't happen to be about Independence, Missouri. So should I try again?
Are we ready, Steve?
So...
He said, go ahead and try.
May I ask how many submissions you have from students?
Not enough. There was a really interesting student entry. Quite interested in Harry Truman, and I was trying to tell people, well, we don't really need another story about Harry Truman, but the student went in, and there's always a different take on a story. The student went in and did a story about the safety plug that you can find in the Truman Library, and it was the plug that was an atomic device that was in the plane that they took out before they dropped the bomb, and then he really paired that with the radiation that Japanese citizens and a woman, I'm blanking on her name, who made origami cranes and made 1,000 cranes, and it's a really pretty provocative display at the Truman Library, and he did a wonderful sort of job, and he interviewed Mark Adams, who at that point was the education director at the Truman Library and is currently the director at the Truman Library, and Mark's going to come to the event on February 22nd to present the student this award. You might ask, the cash awards were $2,000, and that's not inconsequential, particularly if you're a student. And so we want to regroup and reconnect with the people who participated in it and get them with their ideas. It's important to understand is that we don't develop these habits and these practices, and I think that's significant. Actually, there was a film festival in Independence almost a decade ago, and it wasn't quite organized like this, but it then just sort of collapsed. But given what you can do with technology, given the cost of film production and the like, this really has sort of potential, particularly if the community sort of embraces it. The rules were written in such a way that the content is owned by the film festival, so anything that's on here that the City of Independence wants to share, to promote tourism and the like, you know, you don't have to go back and say, well, you know, negotiate rights to replay it and republish it. So it's open source in the sense is that it has that content. I can keep talking, but, or maybe, maybe you want to show it at the end of the meeting? Or...
Feeling confident? No? You don't think it'll work? You don't think it's going to work?
Well, what can I do here to kill a little time? My thought, you've got a lot of other important businesses that deserve your time and attention, and perhaps at the end of the study session, there'll be an opportunity to share this. Like I said, you can see it actually on the I Love Independence Film Festival, you know, dot org. So an unusual project for me. I learned a lot. I learned a lot about what people are, videos people are making in the world, but I want to encourage the community to kind of continue this, because unlike a lot of communities, you know, I'm looking at this sign back behind the mayor, "A Great American Story," and we just have a lot of them. I'll kill one more little piece of time. There is a story that a lot of people don't know. It involves a person named Ralph Peer, P-E-E-P-E-R, and he grew up in Independence. A lot of people know Ginger Rogers grew up here, but she didn't stay here that long, and she left, but we tell the Ginger Rogers story. Ralph Peer went into the music business, and early on, he was discovering niche markets that weren't being covered. He was like 1920s. His family had a business where Cafe Verona is now. It was a hardware store, and he sold phonographs, and the really claim to fame is that he took recording equipment to a place called Bristol, Tennessee, and he advertised in local newspapers, and if you wanted to get music that was not being produced other places, you had to go out into the community. And he, the Carter family, the famous Carter family came and did a recording session, and so they had portable recording equipment with huge battery, you know, and the like, and so this family still exists, and if you look at Peer Music, they're one of the independents, you know, large music producers. Somebody's producing a film about it. It was 20 minutes, so it didn't meet the contest, but the contest created the film. It's by a filmmaker, Paul Winsky, who produced a wonderful documentary called "I'm So Glad." And so at a later point, after this video is done, the hope is that we can share it with the Peer family, and it's a private business, but the simple idea is, well, let's celebrate the story of Ralph Peer and have a Peer Music Festival in Independence. Not to compete with Santa Calagon, but, you know, they have a whole, you know, list of artists, and you say, well, who are your up-and-coming artists that you might want to have some public performance? So some unusual things really sort of came out of, out of the project that were, you know, unanticipated, particularly the zombie movie.
Can you remind us again when the event will be at Inglewood?
Thank you. It is Saturday, February 22nd, at 2:00 PM at the Inglewood Arts Center, and it was originally scheduled in January, but a snowstorm hit, and, you know, another one is on our way, and you hope that you got a clear date, so.
Thank you.
On to other business.
Yeah, we may play it at the end and do that, so Brent, thank you very much. You want to try it one more time? You think it'll work?
Do you want to try it?
Fire away. We should be hearing sound by now. That's all right. Thank you very much. But that was the, just kind of a summary of it. The goal of the committee was to get some film contest, excuse me, film content to help promote the city, because once you've got that, you can put it on video, you can send it out, share it out with, through social media, all of those kinds of things, and that was the, that's the ultimate goal. So with that being said, we'll move on, see if we can play it at the end. We'll continue to have Steve continue to work on it. So that'll take us, Mr. City Manager, extended stay. Do you have any things you'd like to update on that?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, last Monday night, you had first reading of an ordinance modifying the city's code relative to extended-stay hotels. This comes after quite a lot of work with local hotel motel establishments and in consultation with Councilmember McCandless. So tonight, Director of Community Development, Tom Skinnell, is here to provide you with an overview of the inner workings of that ordinance, so that when second reading happens next week, you got a better understanding of the proposed changes within that ordinance. And I will turn over to Mr. Skinnell now.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. As the city manager mentioned, this will be an overview of the proposed changes to the hotel and extended-stay hotel regulations that the council will consider next Monday night. So take you back a little bit. So back in September of 2023, the City Council approved an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the city code to add the regulations pertaining to extended-stay hotels. The purpose of this regulation was to ensure that our extended-stay hotels operate consistently with the city's regulations, but also to maintain the transient nature of the business. Those regulations, they had limited the length of stay that a transient guest could stay at an extended-stay. It allowed extended-stay only at facilities that met certain design and amenity requirements. These were things like interior entryways and lobbies, oversized suite accommodations that had kitchenettes and separate living and cooking and living areas. It did require that extended-stay hotels be noted as such as part of their annual business license, outline the occupancy standards, including the re-registration of guests who are staying at these, as well as the occupancy limits, and would also allow extended-stay hotel to eject a person from the hotel under certain circumstances, and this was in accordance with state statute. So after the adoption, as the city manager had mentioned, there was a lot of ongoing conversation with community members, talking about the updates and the changes or potential changes to the extended-stay regulations. Ultimately, it led us to bring forth the proposed ordinance that we have. One of the first changes that we made was to separate the regulations that apply, that are applicable to all hotels or lodging establishments and those that are applicable to extended stays. So we created two divisions. We modified the definition, so where appropriate, we added extended-stay hotels to certain terms that are used throughout the ordinance. We modified the penalty and interest to clarify that any operator who is delinquent in remitting their transient guest tax back to the city could be subject to the suspension or revocation procedures that the city has. It did add a new requirement. Any operator who is delinquent for three or more months in the last 12 months in remitting their transient guest tax back to the city would need to make a payment that is equal to their 12-month transient guest tax that they would have owed to the city, and that payment would be due at the time of either their business license or liquor license renewal. Switching gears a little bit, so what I'm going to cover here is those regulations that pertain to extended-stay hotels. As mentioned before, all of the extended-stay hotel regulations have been moved to Division 2 of this section. It adds that a legally existing extended-stay hotel that was designed without the interior entryways or lobbies would be exempt from that requirement. However, it does add that if that hotel expands, whether that's in square footage or number of rooms, that then the building must be brought up to that interior entryway standard. It mentions that, or requires, any registered guest who is staying at one of these facilities for more than 30 days will need to re-register and be issued new keys every 30 days of their stay at an extended-stay. That's more for safety and security. The new regulations do not have a time limit in which a guest can stay at an extended-stay. Switching gears yet again, one of the proposed changes applies to hotels. It clarifies that a guest in a hotel can stay no longer than 30 consecutive days. Otherwise, if you're a guest and you're staying longer than 30 consecutive days, you will have to stay at an extended-stay hotel. That's a brief overview of the ordinance that the council has before then, for them, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought it might be helpful to people to think a little bit about what it was we were trying to do with this ordinance. The first was just clarity. There were pieces in different spots. You would have to read the entire ordinance to get a full understanding of what you were required to do as a hotelier, so I appreciate very much your reorganization. It is much more readable, much more understandable to the lay public, and I'm sure to our hotel partners. Some of the other things we were trying to address, our inspection folks often go into these hotels, since they are required to have periodic inspections, and we were finding rooms that had not had maintenance in a long time, had not had housekeeping in a long time, because the residents just refused it, and so there could be rooms that hadn't been touched in months. The other problem we were seeing was hotels that were meant to be somewhere that you spend the night were now becoming long-term living facilities, but they didn't have kitchenettes, they didn't have places for people to prepare meals. So I appreciate you doing a very nice job of clarifying an extended-stay hotel is not just defined by the sleeping space, but by a separate kitchenette that allows people to prepare meals. So it had to have a microwave, it had to have a place for meal prep. So those amenities make more sense for somebody who's going to be there longer than 30 days. The other issues that we were having were rooms that were rented, but then the people staying there were not the actual rentees, so we were having folks let their cousins come stay and operate perhaps a business out of them, some businesses that Chief Dustman was having to deal with. And because of that, we've added the part about them having to go back, show their ID, and get issued a new card, so that we know that the people staying in the room are the people who originally rented it. Some of this is required by state law. You can't have people staying in the room who aren't the people who brought their ID. So I appreciate that we are in better compliance with Missouri statute as well. And then the fourth reason is really that we have had some establishments where the police have had extensive involvement there, and that can't be the case. It's not safe for the other people who stay there, it's not safe for the businesses around them, and if you are the unsuspecting person who rents a room and finds out that there's all kinds of bad activity there, your safety is at considerable risk. So these were the items that I was hoping that we would get addressed in there. I think we have done so, and this is like iteration number 10, and whenever you do these things, you really want to say, who else has ideas? So it's been run by other folks within the city to be sure we didn't make any mistakes. I think it is, reads as a much, much better ordinance, so my appreciation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other further questions? Please proceed.
Just from my understanding, are the proposed changes in addition to the current extended-stay regulations, or the regulations for both?
So what we did, so we divided the section into two. So we have the requirements that apply to all lodging establishments, so that's whether you're operating a hotel or an extended-stay, and those are things like remitting the transient guest tax, ejecting a guest there in accordance with state statute, those types of things. Those are all in Division 1, which is everything that applies to all lodging establishments, and Division 2 is just those that apply to the extended-stay, and we, as Councilmember McCandless mentioned, we took the language that was previously adopted from 23, modified it a little bit, clarified it, made it easier to use, and put those regulations into Division 2, so that it's clear that these only apply to extended stays.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Other further questions? Councilmember Fears, can you hear me? Do you have any questions? Okay. We'll see if he has anything there. Any feedback from the operators or the residents? Any, you know, any discussion?
I know, over the many months, we had, I want to say, probably a handful of meetings with the operators. One of their big concerns was the, on the extended-stay, having that limit, that time limit, the maximum length of stay that somebody could stay there. You may have an individual who had a catastrophe in their home and may need to stay there for a very long period of time while they're going through insurance and rebuilding, so those are some changes that we made to accommodate what we heard from our conversations with them.
And is there any concern with transient guest tax in relationship to the extended stays?
So as state statute reads, transient guest tax is due for the first 30 consecutive days, and then after that, then it's, I'm not exactly sure, I'm not involved with that, but for the first 30 days, it is considered that transient guest tax, and our ordinance mirrors that.
And then, let's say, a hotel's not compliant, what steps do we have in the ordinance to take care of that?
So within the business license section, we have a process that is outlined from cease operations. If they continue not to respond to our request, we can go down that path of the admin hearing, which is on the suspension or revocation of their business license.
Okay, very good. And I'm sure you looked at other cities and the relations, their regulations regarding extended stays. Any insights from that or in doing that process?
Yeah, so our first ordinance from 23 was kind of culled from ordinances throughout the state of Missouri. After that got enacted and having the conversation, that's where we made some more refinements and have brought that forward to the city council, so we did a little bit of both.
Okay. And this is a tough question, and you may not have an answer for it, and that's okay. Do you foresee any unintended consequences from putting this policy into place? That's always the great fear of any policymaker is, is there an unintended consequence we didn't see? Sometimes you don't see it. Sometimes you don't see it until you put it in place and go, oops, didn't mean for that to happen.
I really hope not. I hope with the work and the engagement that we put into this that there aren't any. Now, that doesn't mean that if we find something that we can't bring that forward to correct what that unintended consequence is.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Is anyone else? Please proceed.
And I always ask this question, which is, how will this be communicated back to the hoteliers so that they can be in compliance?
We will do our normal communication. So we will get the list of hotels that are, that have an active license. Should the council pass this, we will also provide them with a copy of that so that they can read through that.
Thank you.
And Mr. City Manager, I think Jared may have actually texted you his question, so if you don't mind, I don't know, how do we do this when you put the hat off of a council member and the city manager on simultaneously? I'm just teasing.
I am just reporting the news.
Very good.
And I will apologize again for our audio issues we're having tonight, but Councilmember Fears asked if we could, on his behalf, interject two questions. And I believe, Tom, you may have spoke to the first one, but if you don't mind again, any feedback, if any, that we've had from the hoteliers on the new ordinance?
We have not heard any since our last conversation with them, which was a few months ago.
And then, Tom, on Slide Six, the last bullet says there is no maximum time limit that applies to extended stay hotels. And if you could just elaborate on the thinking behind not having any limits on those establishments?
So the previous ordinance had a sixty-day time period. Again, the thinking is that if there is a situation where there's some type of catastrophe, a home burns down, and they are, that family is placed in an extended stay, they're dealing with insurance, they're dealing with trying to find a place to live, they may quickly surpass that sixty days. Within our business license ordinance and this ordinance, we have enough safeguards in place where if there does happen to be a bad actor operator, and so thus, we felt comfortable with not having a maximum time limit where an individual could stay in an extended stay hotel.
Thank you. Anything else from Councilmember Fears on follow-ups?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Well, Mr. Scannell, thank you for all the work. I know that you and Councilmember McCandless spent a lot of time on this question and worked through it, and I hope I'm giving credit to the folks who worked on it the most. So, okay. With that being said, I want to say thank you very much for the presentation. Well done. That brings us to our mid-year financial forecast. Mr. City Manager, do you want to bring anything up on, and you kind of frame that before we get started?
Yeah, be glad to, Mayor. So tonight, our Director of Finance, Melissa Cabrera, is going to give the council an update on where we stand now halfway through the current fiscal year and begin to forecast for you some of the issues, impacts, and influences that we see as we begin to prepare a submitted budget for your consideration for next fiscal year. And with that, I will turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before I begin tonight, I just want to take a minute to introduce our new budget manager. This is Alexandra Morgan. She goes by Alex. She started last Monday, and we are extremely excited to have her on board. And she started at the perfect time. She's getting that hands-on training with the budget process here at Independence. So just wanted you all to meet her and, you know, feel free to come and visit her over in the finance department.
Thank you.
So tonight, I wanted to give a mid-year financial update on how we are progressing through the year. We'll take a look at our revenues, how our expenses are tracking. We'll take a look at fund balance and where it's currently sitting. And then we will discuss some of the budget pressures that we are facing coming up in this new fiscal planning process. So first thing, I wanted to take a look at our general fund revenues over the past few years. When you first look at this, it actually looks like this is good. We're trending in the right direction. So we went from seventy-four point four million in revenue in 2021 to eighty-four million in '24. But one of the key things that we have to keep in mind, and that I'm going to discuss a little bit more on the next slide in detail, is that we had some considerable growth in both community needs during that time in the post-COVID world, but also with just general expense growth due to inflation. So what I am about to show you will show you that our revenues have actually decreased over time when you compare real versus nominal value. So as we're taking a look at this, I went back to the 2011 and 2012 actuals and polled our tax revenue. Well, this is really general fund revenue. It includes taxes, pilots, franchise fees, property taxes and fines and forfeitures. So I essentially just eliminated anything that might be a one-time revenue, intergovernmental funds, things like that, that can't be depended upon year after year. So what we see is, it looks like for these categories, that we have actually increased by about nine and a half million dollars. But when you adjust that for inflation, we've actually decreased by about eleven million, which is fourteen and a half percent. When we're looking at just our property taxes alone, it's about a one and a half million dollar decrease in that ten-year period. And then some of the other areas, one of the things that shocked me the most was looking at the franchise fees, telephone. You would be surprised how much that has decreased in that ten-year period as people continue to change habits, eliminate their landlines and move to cell phones. One of the other categories, fines and forfeitures. So this goes back to our court costs. You can see what the implications of, you know, the state passing rules against how much we're actually able to collect from fines and forfeitures. Whether that's a good thing or not, it has affected our revenues and what we have available to spend out there for public services. So with this, one of the things I looked at for economic forecasts, both for the rest of this year and for the next budget year, is I look to see what the state of Missouri expects for us. They expect continued slowdown of growth in 2025, although they are projecting for steady growth in 2026. They also expect unemployment growth to, or I'm sorry, employment growth to slow, which would mean that unemployment would begin to increase. Some of the risks that they have identified are geopolitical conflicts in the Middle East and Ukraine, tariffs that may elevate inflation. I know that we've kind of seen some of that come into play and then go away, but, you know, still that potential is out there for that. The Tax Cut and Jobs Act expires this year, so that could potentially mean that for middle-class families, we could see some increases in their tax rates that would then reduce the amount of money that they have to go out and spend in the community, and then continued shifts in consumer behavior. So, sales tax. One of the things that I do is I don't just compare the sales tax revenues based on a month-to-month basis, what we receive from the Missouri Department of Revenue. I actually take those revenues back, I put them into the business activity month, and one of the things that I'm starting to see is an actual slowdown in our brick and mortar retail economy. So Independence has about a $2.4 billion brick and mortar retail economy. And then, but over the past twelve months, we've seen about a decrease of fifteen point three million in our retail sales since October '23 to October '24. And so what this means is the city has a negative economic growth rate of one percent over the past twelve months compared to a two point six percent increase in CPI. This is less money in our pockets already, but then when you take into account CPI, it further reduces our purchasing power. And this just takes a look at the same information, but over a longer period. One of the things that I think it's important to look out is, as CPI increases, we see several periods where we actually flip upside down, where our revenue growth is then lower than the CPI. And so we're kind of in one of those periods right now, and with the continued decrease in the economy, it just means that we get a little bit further behind. Use tax is another separate tax that we keep a pretty close eye on. So the chart here on the right shows the use tax receipts by fund over the past few years. And then, just to point out, the animal services, as well as our police sales tax this year in the '25-'26 budget, will see an increase in their use tax receipts of two point one percent. So that's additional before that waterfall falls, begins falling to the other funds. This slide is actually a little bit scarier than what the reality is. So if you remember during the budget planning process last year, I talked a lot about how I expected to see our use tax growth begin to slow down, not because there's an actual slowdown in the use tax, but because the way that Missouri calculates what businesses come on board and must pay use tax in the state changed in January 2023. And so we're starting to see that level out. So right now, we have a three hundred and eighty million online retail economy for use tax. Keep in mind that a lot of this wouldn't include things like Old Navy, if they have a nexus in the state, they would still be in the sales tax. So these are just online retailers that don't have a location in Missouri or would not otherwise qualify to pay sales tax. So over the past twelve months, we've actually seen forty-six point four million increase in retail sales tax since October '23. So that is good news for us. And then we're currently at about an eleven percent growth rate over the past twelve months, but if you compare it to last year, you know, we were seeing forty-four percent, thirty-six percent. So it is starting to slow. And again, you can see where it's peaked and now where it's coming back down. So with all of that said, when we're looking at the general fund forecast for fiscal year '24-'25, you know, our top three revenue categories make up sixty-five percent of general fund revenue. So that's pilots, sales tax, and franchise fees. So while pilots have remained relatively stable, it is the sales tax and those franchise fees that when we're looking at that and adjusting it for inflation, that's where we start to run into some issues with our revenues. Sales tax is also susceptible to economic cycles like we're seeing right now. Use tax is growing at a steadier rate than sales tax, so that's a plus. And then with our franchise fees, there is an uncertain long-term outlook. You know, energy efficiency not only affects our pilots when we're talking about our electric utility, but also that electric franchise fee that comes onto other providers in the city, technological changes and customer trends with things like telephone and cable. And so telephone, as I indicated earlier, has already seen a steadily decreasing. And then cable still faces some legislative challenges. So total general fund revenues projected for fiscal year '24-'25 right now are eighty-three point nine million. The good news is that is about one and a half million more than what I had budgeted. So from that perspective, we're doing okay, but something that we certainly will continue to keep an eye on. So this slide, you can see, just shows how we had some pretty significant jumps in '23 and '24, and that will play into the next slide when we start talking about our fund balance. But it has had some positive effects for us. I did try to right-size those '24-'25 budgets to maximize what we would have available to fund programs and services in the general fund. Salaries and benefits. So this chart shows spending by type. This is across all funds. So you can see salaries and benefits are a pretty, pretty large category. We have to have people in order to perform the services that we provide out there for the public. We also have a pretty large expense when it comes to things like capital improvements. Operating expenses, this can include all kinds of things that we do out in the city, just running, you know, public buildings and providing other types of services. And then debt service makes up about twenty-one million citywide. So with general fund expenditure and revenue growth, right now in that '25-'26 forecast, you start to see the red line go over the green line, so expenses start outpacing our revenues. We have about a $5.4 million projected funding gap in fiscal year '25-'26. This is keeping things the same. So this does not anticipate adding any new services. It doesn't anticipate adding any new personnel. This is just funding the city and the general fund as we have done for the past year. So you can see there in fiscal year '23-'24, we were finally able to cross that line and be above the required fund balance. So very good for our city, puts us on a much more solid financial footing. You can see for the '24-'25 projection, I do anticipate adding a little bit to it. But then, starting in '25-'26, we start to go down. So every year, by making some adjustments to the budget, we're able to stave it off for another year. However, without structural change, it will be the same thing year after year. So it's going to take some major decisions in order to correct this so that we can see this going out into future years. So let's talk about budget pressures. So one of the things that has happened recently is we initially felt or heard, you know, that there was a decision that was going to halt payments on all grants. My staff was able to go through and quickly assess what had been billed year-to-date. This would be through November. Keep in mind that we still had services that we were providing that were expected to be covered by grants in December and January, and we were able to put a price tag of about 1.4 million on that. These grants are used for all kinds of things here at the city. A lot of times, they're overtime for police for certain public safety services, including traffic control. These are full and partial salaries and benefits for multiple employees, including in our police department, health, community development, and law, and also funding for multiple capital projects for city and for loss of funding would decrease the ability to provide other important city programs and services. So transit is one of them. It would further erode the dollars available for that. Programs provided by the Palmer Senior Center, including frozen meal delivery, health and animal services programs and initiatives, emergency preparative programs and initiatives, as well as domestic violence enforcement and prosecution. And then on the right-hand side, you can see some of the community partners that would potentially be affected if there was a continued pause on those grant payments. Personnel expenditure projections. So this is another one of our budget pressure areas. Obviously, we have to have people in order to go out and perform the programs and services that we do to the community, but it is an area where we can see some large increases. So here on this slide, and for fiscal year '24-'25, you can see the baseline. That was the original anticipated budget when it was passed. The blue line above it is after the unexpected healthcare increase, as well as the police salaries that increased on July one. as well as the police salaries that increased on July 1. Fortunately, we had a tax that the community supported and passed that helped cover that. But you can see that, you know, ongoing growth of that is pretty significant for all personnel expenditures. And this is one of the key areas that we are looking at right now for not just controlling, but making sure that we are staying up to date on what we are paying our employees. We are going through this compensation comparison. We have six comparable cities that we are doing a comparison to. I just happened to pull the police officer salary because we just went through to match what Kansas City is doing. But you can see that right now, we're only 16% above the market. So we weren't the only city that knew that we were going to have to address our police salary issues, and other cities followed suit. And so now that advantage that we thought we had has been somewhat eroded. So one of the things that we'll need to keep an eye on in the future, and we are going through and doing this for all of our active classifications that we include in the budget each year. Healthcare projections. Healthcare increases anywhere between 9% and 10% annually. So that's obviously a significant expense, and it's something that we want to provide to our employees. So we always keep an eye and look at those projections. But unfortunately, it's one of those things that's just an increased cost annually on the budget. So overtime by department. This is all departments. I want to note that it also includes our police department that is reimbursed oftentimes for their overtime by grants that they know that they're getting ahead of time. But you can see that over the past few years, for the actuals and the projected, overtime has grown significantly. So it is one of the larger budget pressures across the city. And ways that it impacts us are not just in the actual salary expense, but ongoing for our loggers expenses. So in summary, expenditure growth continues to outpace our revenue growth. We need to keep an eye on our sales tax revenues just because we are starting to see a slight downturn in our retail economy. Increased revenue is necessary for long-term budget stabilization. The good news is, general fund right now is currently meeting our reserve requirements. Many of the budget pressures that the city has previously faced have not changed. We do know what they are. That makes it a little bit better. Not easier, but at least we are aware of what we're facing each year. And then some new budget changes include unknown surrounding inflation and potential significant loss of grant funding. And that presents all new challenges for us. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
So as you're approaching a budget year in a situation like this where you're not just thinking about this year, but you're thinking, you know, five years in, looking at a declining revenue source, are we looking at priority-based budgeting? Are we... Tell me the approach that we have toward addressing future budget challenges that we're going to face.
Priority-based budgeting, yes, that is certainly an approach. We are currently, it's gone out to departments to update what their '25, I'm sorry, '2425. They'll need to go and make updates. If they've had any large programmatic changes, they would need to go in and do the reallocations there on their, for their employees and their expenses so that we can start to get a true cost of their programs. As is pretty typical, a lot of them are programs that are very difficult to change. You know, but we know like what the most expensive categories are and what those look like in our city.
And the hard part is what happens every year when we have budgetary challenges in any organization is that you starve your capital expenses in order to pay your operational expenses. And then we end up with buildings that don't get maintained and parks that we can't invest in. And so I hope we will continue to think about how we balance our capital needs versus our operational needs because that capital investment is our long-term payment for the future. It's easy to solve the problem right in front of you, which is operational. But that's going to be important for us to keep an eye on. Mr. City Manager, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions?
Mayor?
Please proceed.
I think this is a city manager question. So we were presented this at Finance and Audit. And it's, some of it is hard and we're, you know, something to worry about. But can you talk about some things we possibly have that could help with this? I mean, there, we have potentially some things that could happen in Independence that would bring in some good revenue, correct?
We do. And I, I wouldn't say that we are, you know, completely out of options on things that we can do on the expenditure side of the ledger. I think we always have a responsibility to look for new operating efficiencies, ways to share services with other jurisdictions or civic partners, whatever that may be. But by and large, the hallmark of my tenure as city manager has been reducing on the expense side. In the last year to two years, we have really seen an uptick in economic activity. And that's where we need to see that. We need to have more growth, more people moving into our community, more businesses in our community, creating better, more and better-paying jobs in our community. And we're starting to see that with the expansion in the Little Blue Valley and the first business that has now located into that project, and not just located, but is planning to add production lines to their existing services. We remain in competition for some very high-profile projects. The last number that I heard quoted was about $12 billion of potential capital investment. I know the Crossroad Materials project that was voted on last week certainly wasn't without its questions. But I think that's indicative of the kinds of projects that we are chasing in terms of new jobs, which was $2,100, and average salary, which was $70,000 a year. For many years, our bread and butter in Independence was our retail sales tax economy. And you saw it in the presentation tonight. Between online and brick and mortar, we're supporting a $1.7 billion retail sales economy in Independence. But as that continues to evolve and transition to a more online-based platform, it is imperative for us to have employment opportunities and wages that will support the reality of what today's market will bear. So I am confident that our revenue growth is headed in the right direction because our economic development is pointed towards the right projects, and we're making the right investments into our community to make ourselves competitive and attractive for those kind of projects that will help grow our revenue.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions?
One more thought.
Please proceed.
I do want to be sure that we raise that the city has had the fiscal discipline to be sure that it maintains a rainy day fund. And it is easy to look at these numbers and not maintain that. But unexpected circumstances occur, and you have to have a fund that you can dip into. I mean, who could have seen COVID coming? And the kind of fiscal discipline you have to have a cushion is really important for us. And opportunities may come our way where we really want to invest because they pay for the future. So thank you for that. It requires hard choices to make sure that we put the money in there. We need to think about that as money that we don't even touch because that is in the safety net. And then work with the dollars that we have that are available for expenditures. So I just want to be sure that I recognize that because that takes serious discipline. And community needs to recognize that that was an important investment in the future of the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? And I don't know if this would be for you or for Mr. City Managers, so I'll put it out there and then see who wants to grab it. So what are the top three or four biggest budgetary challenges facing the city from your perspective? You know, just what are the things, the three or four things that like just jump out and go from there, and I don't know who wants to take it?
I will offer my thoughts. And Ms. Cabrera, if there's anything I missed that you think's important, please, please jump in. Right now, as I just mentioned, we aren't growing our revenue quickly enough to keep up with expenditure growth. And I don't think that's indicative of inappropriate or misplaced expenditure priorities. I think that's indicative of we need to continue to grow our economy and grow our population here in Independence to keep up with that. And through this council's leadership, as I mentioned, the last year to two years, our project list is at an all-time high. The capital investment we saw last year, the commercial and building permit valuation we saw was incredible. So we're trending the right direction there, but we need to stay aggressive in that. Like any organization, personnel is an expense. And it can be a big one, in particular with healthcare. As you heard Ms. Cabrera say, 10% increase forecasted for next year. That's just, you know, that's kind of a cost of doing business, but it is an aggressive one that we maintain. And then I would say our third challenge in there is looking at how we budget for and operate and aligning our public safety resources so that we get the most efficiency out of those. You know, I know under Chief Dustman's leadership, we've worked very hard to ensure that we are bringing people back. By that, I mean filling vacant positions. It is cheaper to pay somebody salary than to pay somebody overtime to staff department. And, you know, we've reduced the total number of vacancies in that department to 18. At one point in time, that was over 40. So minimizing our overtime expenses there will help immensely. Fire department, same thing. Working with Chief Walker to ensure adequate staffing, meeting those minimum staffing requirements so that we can pay men and women to do the job on straight time rather than having to call people in to meet our minimum staffing requirements and paying overtime for those. So those are three things I would see. And any other thoughts you have, I would certainly welcome.
Yeah, we have certainly operated lean in most of our departments because most of our expenses come from the personnel side. But while that might save you money one year, it certainly begins to take a toll on the city, and it can be costlier down the road. So I think that's one of the things that we have to look at and balance. It's not just, oh, it's easy to cut personnel because it's not. It has ramifications. It can undermine your revenues in other areas when you do that just because we have to be out there providing certain services. And certainly, you know, to Councilmember McCandless's point, when you continue to defer maintenance, that ends up costing you in the long run because not only do prices escalate, but then you put yourself in a situation where you're starting to make emergency repairs, which are often, you know, 25, 30, 50% more expensive. So it's difficult because when you're trying to make sure you're maintaining your services, you have a lot of things to balance. So it's certainly not anything that we take lightly when we're going through and doing the budget, and is always a consideration.
Thank you. And if I'm correct, is some questions from Councilmember Fears?
I know this will come as a great surprise, but Councilmember Fears has questions about the budget. Melissa, you mentioned on the slide about spending by type, how much of the operating expenses are represented by utility departments? And if you would like me to put my city manager hat back on, I'd be happy to answer that for you.
Sure, if you would. Yes, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I would love to. Of the $413 million that was shown for this year's budget, $259 million of that is accounted to our three utilities, electric, water, and sanitary sewer, which is about 63% of the city's total budget. You kind of showed this on a later slide, but you talked about healthcare increases. Can you just go into more about what we may know that drives those healthcare costs? If we have any information behind what may be?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that it's anything that the City of Independence is doing. This is pretty normal. My previous organization, we at one point had a 20% increase in healthcare costs. This is just something that we are facing as a nation. You know, we have the StayWell Committee that keeps a close eye on it. Jonathan from C-Biz keeps a close eye on it. I think overall that, you know, with the StayWell Fund and how we have that set up, it's running as it's supposed to. It's just costs in healthcare increase annually by pretty significant amounts.
One of the things, putting my city manager hat back on, and I don't have exact figures in front of me, but I would be remiss if I did not use this moment to give some recognition to Councilmember Fears and working with our StayWell Health Insurance Advisory Committee, who've done a lot of work to our plan designs and to help inform and educate our plan members about the various offerings out there. And as a result of that, over the last several years, and again, I don't have the exact percentages, and I can certainly find those and share those. But we have seen a significant migration from the city's OAP-1 plan to the OAP-2. So that is a migration away from a, if you will, Cadillac plan, for lack of a better term, to a, one that has a health savings account and is more of a managed healthcare account. And as a result of that, we are seeing more savings, or at least I should say differently, we are seeing less of an aggressive increase than was forecasted in our health insurance premium costs. So that is something that has been to our advantage. And again, I'd be very remiss if I didn't thank folks for their work on that. Melissa, the last question from Councilmember Fears. How much of police overtime is reimbursed if we know that? And are any of our other overtime expenditures reimbursable expenses?
I do not know off the top of my head how much of the police overtime is reimbursable, but we can certainly find that out and follow up with Councilmember Fears and the entire council. Some of the overtime, let's see, I am thinking... Yes, so some of the overtime is reimbursable for different reasons. If there are emergencies, if there are things where we have staff that are responding both in-state, out-of-state to large emergency operations, you know, from things like tornadoes, hurricanes, that type of thing. So some of these that you would see would have been reimbursable. But again, it's not just the overtime expense itself that causes a financial burden on the city. It's those long-time costs on things like loggers. Because while some of the grants may cover your increased costs for, you know, FICA and loggers and things like that, at the time that they occur, loggers obviously continues longer than that. And there is nothing in the grants that accounts for that. But yeah, I'll get a better breakdown for Councilmember Fears of how much of the overtime is reimbursable by grants.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just for people who don't speak city fluently, loggers is our retirement program. Just for the average person who's watching tonight.
Yes, yes.
And that's a retirement program for the employees of the city. So just as clarification, but that's a very good point. Thank you. Anyone else have other questions? I've got some written down here, so just give me just a second. This is just a general question. So with general sales tax numbers down, is that, you know... So with general sales tax numbers down, is that, you know, from your perspective, Mr. City Manager, an indication that we might be on the front end of a recession or something like that, or is it hard to say?
I think that's a trend certainly that we're seeing at the statewide level. The, the state is forecasting a slowdown in sales tax. I don't know if it's the product of a looming recession just as much as there is not as much cash sloshing around in the economy as there was in the wake of some of the stimulus programs that were available post-COVID. So I think some of that consumer spending that was incentivized post-COVID, some of that, those dollars have just dried up and I think you're seeing that reflected then in, in the marketplace.
Do you, from a forecast perspective, and what are some of your colleagues that are looking at from a national perspective? So I'm sure you look at economists that are municipal economists and things like that, what are they forecasting, say, down the road?
I mean, I-
It's a crystal ball and it's hard.
It, it is a crystal ball and there are a lot of unknowns right now. I, I think the biggest obstacle that we're looking at is, is inflation starting to inch back up, particularly if tariffs do go into effect. We expect that to have, especially in Independence, when inflation starts to go up, it seems like it has a disproportionate effect on our sales tax revenue. And so, you know, where you would normally expect it to kind of feel some growth in your sales tax, it does not happen in Independence. It causes people to, to be more conservative in their spending or they just have less dollars in their pocket to spend. Overall, they're spending more on things that are household that are not taxable. So, so I mean, that's, that's one of the things. I think right now nationally, they, growth is not expected to, to continue. Anything that is, is again fueled by, fueled by that inflation. So, you know, unemployment ticking back up in the region, obviously another, another thing to keep an eye on. I didn't include any charts on, on unemployment, but we are starting to see that tick back up. Obviously, that's additional less dollars that we would have out there in our local economy. So, you know, right now, I, I just updated the sales tax today. I was able to go through and, and look at the reports from the state. So we were down 1% year to date, now we're down 1.4%. So it's, it's not an extreme slowing, but it's something to keep an eye on. And, you know, sometimes it could be things like late payments that go into the Department of Revenue. So we just keep an eye on it. You know, it's not, it's not meant other, anything other than us to have, have knowledge of what might be coming down the road so that we're not put in a situation in the last two months where we have to put a halt on spending. But instead, we can be a little bit more proactive with it.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mid-America Regional Council does regional estimates and they are mirroring exactly what you're saying, which is slowdown in retail, slowdown in hiring, slowdown in growth of population. And so especially concern with 30,000 federal employees in the metropolitan area that that may also have some flow-through effect. So those were some of the cautions that they've been giving at the recent markup dates.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have other further comments or questions? Thank you, very good.
Thank you.
Great job, well done, as always. And Mr. City Manager, thank you for your input on that. So that takes care of our mid-year fiscal update. This brings us to our GeoBond question number three overview. Mr. City Manager, would you like to frame that or put that in perspective?
Certainly do that while the director is walking up. As the council knows, since you voted in December to put three questions before the voters on April the 8th, we've been trying to utilize the study sessions between now and that election to help further inform and educate the community about what these three questions would do and the potential benefits behind them. Tonight, we wanted to focus on question three, which is for our, dedicated for our historic sites and our athletic complex here in Independence. So Parks Recreation and Tourism Director Morris Heide is here to give an overview and more detail behind that question.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So we'll jump right into GeoBond question number three. So I have several discussion points I'd like to talk about this evening. So one is the question itself. Next, talk about the Bingham Wagner Estate, the Vale Mansion, the Truman Memorial Building and the Independence Athletic Complex. So on April 8th, 2025, the GeoBond question number three will be on the ballot for the citizens of Independence. That general bond or general obligation bond question reads, shall the City of Independence, Missouri, issue its general obligation bonds in the amount of $12 million for the purpose of renovating, improving and equipping parks and recreation buildings, facility and grounds, including historic buildings and the Independence Athletic Complex? The $12 million will be divided between the following locations. 3.7 million for the Bingham Wagner Maintenance and Repair, 2.2 million for the Vale, for Vale Mansion Maintenance and Repair, just under $1 million for the Truman Memorial Building and $5 million for the Independence Athletic Complex for a grand total of the $12 million. I should mention that the Bingham Wagner Estate and the Vale Mansion, those numbers are derived from a 2018 Facility Assessment that the city had, had done for us with increases for inflation. So 2018 numbers with inflated to 2025 numbers. So first, let's talk about the Bingham Wagner Estate. And I'd like, if I could, to share a little bit of history. I think it's important as we talk about these historic sites to understand why these facilities are important. So the Bingham Wagner Estate, excuse me, was built in 1852. One of its very famous owners was George Caleb Bingham. He owned it from 1862 to 1870. He was known in his day as the Missouri Artist and painted some very well-known works of art, including the Jolly Flat Boatmen, Fur Traders Descending the Missouri and Martial Law, which is better known as Order Number 11. I don't know about the first two paintings, but Order Number 11 was painted while lived at the Bingham Wagner Estate in 1868. In 1897, the property was purchased by the Wagner family, who are partners with George Gates, the grandfather of Elizabeth, of Elizabeth Virginia Wallace, the future wife of our 33rd President of the US, better known as Bes, Bes Truman. There are over 20 acres on the site and includes seven historic buildings. And I wanted to mention this as well, in case you're not aware, on the east side of the property, which is current day Osage Street, which used to be known as, that used to be known as the Santa Fe Road. It's kind of a narrow, almost alley-like street there. The pavement is laid directly over the 1846 road alignment. Wagons would head, load up on the square with supplies. They'd head south on the Santa Fe Road, pass the Bingham Wagner property and cut across the southeast corner of the Bingham Wagner property, where you can still see the swales today. It is a local historic landmark and listed on the National Register of Historic Places and the city acquired the, the property in 1979. So just a few highlights and some of the projects for the GeoBond question number three. So these are just a few of the 49 specific projects we have from that 2018 Facility Assessment. First, I want to talk about an upgrade to the electrical system. This may be getting into the weeds a little bit, but I, I think this is very interesting and really highlights some of the challenges we have with historic sites. Since the house was built in 1852 and remodeled with additions in the late 1800s, it has what is known as knob and tube wiring. This was prevalent up until the 1920s and 30s. Knob and tube wiring has porcelain knobs and tubes through which the copper wires would run. The wire was covered with asphalt-soaked cotton cloth as a form of insulation and is only rated for about 10 amps. Now to put that in perspective, today in your home, you have 15 amp or 20 amp circuits. So this is only 10 amps, so roughly half. This type of wiring only has a hot and a neutral wire, there's no ground wire. So this project would upgrade all the wiring and upsize the main house to about a 400 amp service. Currently has either 60 or 100 amps, so very minimal electrical. Some of the other projects would include installing air conditioning in the main house. This is one of the few buildings in the city that does not have air conditioning. Replace concrete and asphalt, well, I should mention throughout the house. It has some window units, but not whole house air conditioning. Replace concrete and asphalt that has deteriorated over the years. Riff replacements, repair and replace deteriorated plaster, as well as painting several of the buildings and siding and window repairs. So there's again, just a few highlights of those 49 specific projects we have on the list from the 2018 Assessment. And here, this may be very difficult to see, but you can hopefully see in these photos, you can see these little knobs where the wires are running. So that's literally what, what we have in the home currently is this knob and tube wiring. And these are a few photos of the exterior of the property, so showing some of the exterior improvements, asphalt repairs, concrete, windows and siding and painting. So next, let's talk about the Vale Mansion. So again, a little history about the Vale Mansion. Colonel Harvey M. Vale was born in 1831. He made his fortune financing the construction of the Erie Canal in the 1860s and 1870s. He also operated the Star Mail Route from Independence to Santa Fe, New Mexico. He acquired around 2,000 acres of land in and around Independence and on a 33 acre tract north of the square, he built the Vale Mansion from 1871 to 1881 at a cost of about $100,000 in the day. And that's about $3 million today, so pretty pricey mansion. It was a very modern home with indoor plumbing, running water and flushable toilets. Again, not the norm in Independence in the 1880s. The mansion was built in the Second Empire style or French Revival style. This was named after Emperor Napoleon III. Now, after the death of Colonel Vale in 1894, the mansion changed hands several times. It functioned as a nursing home from 1908 to 1982. And as a true story, I can recall as a child, visiting a family member of my, my parents going into the home. So some of you may have similar experiences. It is a local historic landmark and in 1969 was listed on the National Register of Historic Places and the city acquired the property in 1983. So again, a few highlights, these are just a few of the 21 specific projects we have for the Vale from that 2018 Facility Assessment. So replacement of the wood windows that have deteriorated and also adding exterior wood storm windows. The wood trim that is deteriorated will be replaced or repaired and repainted. Many of the limestone sills are in need of replacement. Several of the HVAC units need to be replaced. Again, asphalt parking lot and the driveway repairs need to be done, so concrete curb and sidewalk replacement and also cleaning and tuck pointing the exterior walls. And a few more photos showing some of the intricate and ornate woodwork that really needs some repair on the building. Next, I'd like to talk about the Truman Memorial Building. So again, a little history about this building. On January 16, 1925, an announcement of the construction of the memorial building was published in the Independence Examiner. The American War Mothers decided to build it in memory of the servicemen who served during World War I. It was dedicated on July 4th, 1926 by Harry Truman. It was known at the time as the Independence Memorial Building or the Soldiers and Sailors Memorial. It's interesting to note that the only presidential press conference held in Independence by President Truman was held in the memorial building on June 27th, 1945. From 1954 to 1957, it housed many of the President Truman's presidential papers before they were moved to the Truman Library when that was built. It has housed many groups over the years, including the Chamber, American War Mothers, United Daughters of the Confederacy, Daughters of the American Revolution and the American Legion. However, by 1997, it had fallen into disrepair, we were talking about capital needs earlier. Mayor Ron Stewart at the time set up a task force to seek funding for renovation, which included donations from citizens, civic leaders as well as federal funding. When renovations were completed in 2002, it was rededicated as the Truman Memorial Building and it is part of the Harriet Truman Historic District and a local historic landmark. And I know this will be hard to see as well, but this is actually some photos of that 1926 program. So July 4th, 1926, it was dedicated. One of the names listed there, I'm sure you're familiar with, is Sergeant Tyree J. Ford. A little history about this individual, he was killed in action on September 29, 1918 in, in World War I. Sergeant Ford is buried at Muse Argonne Cemetery in Rome, Rome, France, probably saying that incorrectly. This is what really struck me, he was 20 years old and he was killed just 44 days before the end of the war. Tyree J. Ford graduated from Independence High School in 1916 and he was the president of his high school class. So he's again, just one example of the names that this memorial building was dedicated to. So some of the improvements that would be part of this GeoBond question. So site work and masonry repairs for some water infiltration issues, HVAC improvements and riff repairs that are needed for the building. Excuse me, replacement of the audiovisual equipment and replacement of the exterior signage. Again, some photos of some of the work that needs to be completed at the Truman Memorial Building. Lastly, but not least, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Independence Athletic Complex. So the athletic complex covers 165 acres and includes 17 fields of baseball, softball, soccer and football. It is, it was partially open in 2008 and then fully opened in 2009. There are several amenities on site, including a large shelter, an amphitheater, a playground, restroom, restrooms and walking trails. On the screen on the left shows the layout for the fields. So you have eight soccer fields, two baseball fields, three softball fields and four football fields. And then on the right on your screen is kind of an aerial view of the same football or field layout, excuse me. So that back in 2010, our latest Parks and Recreation Master Plan, these are some of the recommendations that came out of that plan. They were really focused on, on just rehabbing or renovating what was currently there. So the list includes field renovation, asphalt repairs, replacing existing site amenities, but also adding a playground, shelters, restrooms and a storage building. So these are some photos of what would have, from the recommendations from the 2010 Master Plan. This evening, I would like to introduce a concept. So we have just started on the process of updating our 15-year-old Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So here's a concept that we have, we've just initially started playing around with. Again, this is just an idea, it's a concept, nothing set in stone. I don't want to misconstrue this in any way. But as we've talked about, the budgetary needs, the financial needs for the city, certainly financial needs for Parks and Recreation, the challenges we face as trying to draw in more individuals and there's the sports tourism concept that we've been talking about for the last couple of years. So this would be a concept of taking the current athletic field, athletic complex and instead of having multiple sports, four sports initial, four, four sports at the moment, turning this into a second, 17 full-size soccer fields. This would allow for increased parking and would give us an opportunity to host local and regional tournaments and really focus and hone in on that sports tourism opportunities. Currently, we don't have enough of any one field to do any kind of tournaments. It's really the, the, the quality versus quantity discussion that we've really been talking about the last couple of years. One of the things we've been seeing increasingly is the shift of young people from baseball, softball or other sports really focusing in on soccer. It's a fairly low-cost entry sport for young people. We also have the FIFA World Cup coming up in next summer. So there's a lot of momentum, a lot of interest around the FIFA World Cup. So anyway, this, but again, I want to present the idea, this is just one concept that we are looking at, we've started looking at. We will be relying heavily on input we receive through the Parks Recreation Master Plan from citizens, stakeholders, other groups, as we try to figure out what makes the most sense. Should we just kind of refresh what we have? Or is there some opportunity to really look at some out of the box thinking to really grow that sports tourism idea? So in summary, GeoBond question three, so that's, it's talking about $7 million for historic sites and $5 million for the athletic complex. 3.7 million for the Bingham Wagner Estate, 2.2 million- Estate, 2.2 million for the Vale Mansion, $969,000 for the Truman Memorial Building, and $5 million for, dollars for the athletic complex. Once again, I want to emphasize what I showed you on the previous slide was just one concept of many, and we will be discussing those as we work through that Parks and Recreation Master Plan update process. Also on this slide, it shows the annual financial impact for the GeoBond question number three at the bottom of the slide there. For a home with $100,000 residential assessed valuation, there would be a cost of $9.49 annually. For a $200,000 home, it would be $18.98 annually. $300,000 would be $28.47 annually, and $400,000 valuation would be $37.96. So, in closing, I wanted to end with just a few more comments. On January 15th, 2025, City Manager Zach Walker gave the State of the City address at the Chamber Luncheon. In his remarks, he mentioned three key themes: preserving our past, embracing our present, and preparing for our future. So, along those lines, I'd like to share a quote that President Bill Clinton made about Harrius Truman at the September 22, 2000 dedicated of the dedication of the U.S. Department of State Building in Washington, D.C. It was named in honor of Harry Truman. He said, "If we truly wish to honor President Truman, we will do in our day what he did so brilliantly in his day. See clearly the long-term path we must follow and take the first steps without hesitation." And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well done. Thank you very much. Anyone, any questions?
I'm delighted to see air conditioning is on the list for Bingham Wagner. Since it's a tourist spot, you hope that people will be able to tour it, and yet, we have to shut it for the majority of the summer because it's too hot to go in the building. So, we're not able to take advantage of the people who would love to see our wonderful assets. So, I appreciate that. Can we find electricians who know how to deal with knob and tube electrical systems, those, without a seance?
It's actually more, it's actually more common than you would believe.
Okay.
It's kind of scary in a way, but it, there's a lot of buildings still, especially historic buildings with knob and tube wiring. So, so yes, we're confident we can, we can find folks who can work on that, but.
Thank you.
But yes, your comment about the air conditioning. There are many times when the upper story of the Bingham is basically off limits. It is so warm, it, it just isn't, you know, folks don't want to take a tour in the upstairs. So, looking forward to air conditioning.
Anyone else other, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Will you go back to soccer complex slide?
Sure, yes.
This is really exciting. For me, turf or grass?
Probably grass initially. Turf is so, the upfront cost for that is pretty prohibitive. I should mention, though, this would allow us to have 17 grass fields, and the challenge with grass fields is you have to let about a 25% accord of those rest. You can't continuously play on those for the turf to, you know, continue. So, this would give us ample fields to do that with. So.
I really love this idea. I.
The possibilities, thank you. The possibilities are so endless with this because not only, I mean, this is jobs. For a tournament, you need, you know, referees, field marshals. People come with food trucks and sell things to, to the, the kids who play in the tournaments. And I also, I'm not sure people realize, there's only a couple of months of the year where people aren't playing soccer outside. I mean.
Correct.
The season starts in March, and you can play until, you know, I mean, we were, we were playing well up until November. So, there's only a couple of months where we wouldn't be able to have stuff. And there are, the soccer fields in Overland Park are now having winter tournaments where you play, you know, that's part of the fun, is, is you play, you know, in the cold, in the snow, whatever. I love this idea. I think this is fantastic. And I also, the future upgrade for softball and baseball, that, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, yeah. Obviously, this would impact those sports. We would have to have some further discussions about, you know, some kind of phased approach or what that means long-term. We certainly don't want to minimize our softball or, or football or baseball groups that we have in town. It's just, again, we're seeing this trend more towards soccer being the, the preeminent sport. So, as part of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we'll be looking at all that. How would that, how would that work? I should add, too, that even our softball, baseball fields, Mill Creek, Santa Fe, many of those fields have not been updated in years. So, again, we're kind of in the same capital investment challenge. So, all of, all of our infrastructure really needs to be updated. So, this would give us an opportunity, again, though, to focus on quality, upgrade as we can, and then hopefully expand to sports tourism at some point.
And really, beyond just, you know, tournaments on the weekends, we could maybe attract a league here.
Certainly, yes.
Which, I mean, that would be every weekend. That would be great.
Yeah. And to put this in perspective, you mentioned Overland Park. Shields in Overland Park has 12 fields. Legacy Park and Lee Summit has 12. This would give us 17. So, again, we would, we'd have ample, ample fields for play. So.
Very good. Anyone else other questions? Okay. Well done. Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, anything to follow up, or is there any other questions from Council Member Fears?
No questions from Council Member Fears. One thing, Mayor, that I would like to highlight for you, your colleagues, and the community. I know there's often a, a question when we've been out visiting with the, the community about this issue of, you know, how do we know for sure what these funds are going to be spent on? And the council's passed a resolution to establish various oversight mechanisms for this. We're regulated by state statute and federal law. But one thing specifically to this presentation, if you'll go visit the city website in tonight's meeting, Parks Recreation and Tourism has put together an itemized list of the projects and the amounts that would be spent down to like a, a line item budget. It is nothing glamorous or sexy. These are projects that are intended to ensure the survivability of these facilities for the next generation. But, I mean, down to the, the dollar, you can see the intended plan of spending for, for these projects. So, that is something I would encourage folks that are interested to go take a look at because they can see the, the need and the dollar amount where these needs will be spent.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, we are about to have snow again. Could you just touch on what the city planned for that, and if we're going to have city building closures, and how that will be decided, and where people can go find that information?
Yes, this would be, let me begin by saying, this is a, a great opportunity to remind folks. Follow the city on our various social media channels. We also, you know, have great relationships with the traditional media. So, the bug across the bottom of the screen will let you know about closures, et cetera. But for more specific updates about what's happening here in the city, I would encourage people to visit the city website and to visit, or to subscribe to our different social media channels like Facebook, et cetera. We are gearing up for this storm, have been the last several days. Our street maintenance crews will be, again, pre-treating roads, which will hopefully help, you know, prevent some of the freezing and bonding of elements to the roadways. But once the, the storm begins, our crews will be out there around the clock, working to remove the snow. As a reminder, we really focus on our main thoroughfares first because those are highly traveled, and then work our way through a progression down into residential neighborhoods, often working to get a passable lane first in residential neighborhoods. And then, as the event begins to pass, we'll come back through and start to open those up curb to curb. If, if the school district is closed, we often tie our policy for Palmer Senior Center to that. So, if the school district declares no school, we will close the senior center, but still have our meal delivery as scheduled. Look to the city website for some of the other recreation facilities, like the Sermon Center, or cultural centers like the Frontier Trails Museum, to see if those have been closed. You can also follow on the city website. Our snowplows have a tracking mechanism within those, so you can see where the, the plows are and where they've been. And then, of course, there's information on the website where you can report slick spots or areas that you think need additional attention as well. So, city's website, social media, those are the best places to see very specific updates for City of Independence and, and our response efforts to that storm.
Thank you very much. And any chance the video could be seen, or do we have any luck with that?
We're gonna, we're gonna try here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for doing that.
Well, again, sorry for the technical difficulties. Mayor, I don't think we're going to have luck with that tonight, but we will, we'll get that. That's another opportunity for me to plug our social media. We'll get the shared on there and also on the city's YouTube channel. So, folks that were interested in that, it's a really cool video, very well done, and summarizes this film festival and film contest very well. So, we'll get that, so folks can see that and, and share that across social media as well.
Shall we try or just move on, Rebecca? Move on? No worries. All right. No, that's fine. With anything else, other questions, comments, concerns, anything else from you, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.